All right, we'll go ahead and get started. She'll be with us momentarily. So I'd like to call the meeting to order. Karen, can you call the roll?
Yes, President Furman.
Present.
Vice President Curry.
Here.
Alder Bennett.
Here.
Alder Conklin. Oops.
A present.
There you are. Elder figure, a call on her way. Alder Foster.
Present.
Alder Heck.
Here.
Alder Abbas. You have quorum.
All right. Thank you, Karen. We're going to, it looks like since we don't have public comment, we'll skip the tech intro and I will see, does anybody have any disclosures or accusations? Not seeing any. Let the record show that Alder Figaro Cole has joined us. There is no public comment and so we'll, we'll start with our first, our second item on the agenda, which is discussion of the council office legislative administrative assistant position description update, register item seven, one, four, nine, eight. I'm going to turn the floor over to Karen.
Hello. Yes, I wanted to run this by you and also run the hiring plan by you. And so what you have on the, linked on the agenda is the position description. And that's Madeline's job that you have there. And I did make some modifications to it to bring it in line with the core functions of the office. And I sent, I apologize for the late notice. I did send my, the hiring plan for the office as well as the open positions. And I'm not sure, President Furman, would you like me to share this document? On the screen?
Sure.
Okay, let me see. Is that, Joe, am I able to? Share my screen? Oh, yep. Okay. All right. So you should be able to see a common council office hiring plan 2022. And so I don't want to scroll too fast here, but you also have, I did send it an email if you'd like to look at it further. So what we've got here, so this is the big one. This is the one that is the priority immediately. And I did make a significant changes to the position description. I'd like to post it by the 23rd. We're going to go with a, an extra, I'm proposing to go with an external search and according to HR, I asked for the information on how long things take, 10 to 12 weeks from posting. And then we of course have two more. So we have the community engagement specialist. I did not make any significant changes to this. It's from how the council approved it. It was submitted the week of, my first week, April, the week of April 4th for HR review. They need to finalize the, some information comp group and range on it. Then it gets sent to the personnel board and that will be the, the July 20th meeting. Finance is July 25th. Common Council and I'm, I'm not sure, but I, if possible, for introduction and action on eight, eight, August 2nd, and then I can post by the eighth. Also, external 10 to 12 weeks from posting. And then the common council legislative analyst, I didn't make major changes. I updated the percentages to be more, a bit more descriptive than they were in the old ones. I'd like to post this then by the 31st. And again, external 10 to 12 weeks for the process. And then what, attached to your agenda, you have this position, which was originally the legislative or previously the legislative management system specialist. And you can see the shape of it now as administrative assistant. And then on this, in this packet that I sent you this afternoon, I also provided you with the other two open positions. So, so you could have for your reference, that's the that's the community engagement and the legislative analyst. So you can take a look at those as well. So I guess my ask is just for a get a thumbs up on that or thumbs up and feedback or however y'all want to do it so that with the goal of getting things started as soon as I possibly can.
Alder Foster, go ahead.
Thanks, President Furman. Thank you, Chief of Staff. On the resident engagement one, do you know what the it says personnel board on this, on 720 is, do you have any more information on why that can't go any sooner?
Apparently new positions have to go through the full process again that, from what I understand, it's all from what I understand from HR, they did not finalize the comp group and range. They made a recommendation. And it was passed through with a recommendation, but they need to study it to make the final determination. And unfortunately Personnel Board only meets once every other month. So they were, they didn't make the, the May meeting with that information. So they said the next will then be July.
You submitted it on April 4th, but they weren't able to get it on their May 20th meeting?
I don't know exactly if, I didn't, I said it submitted it the week of April 4th. I have to go back to check exactly which day I submitted it, or maybe it was the, the Monday right after. If you want the exact date, I'll tell you early April.
I guess I'm, the main point is, is there any way to speed that up? I mean, I obviously we were delayed because we didn't have the chief of staff position filled, but now posting by August 8th. If everything goes to plan and then 10 to 12 weeks for there, we basically lost an entire year again on this position. So I guess the if there's no way to get it on the when are, are they meeting this week?
We checked the personnel board schedule.
Because that's the difference of two months. If there's any way to, I mean, if it's just finalizing that and they've had it for over a month, is there any way to get an amendment on that agenda and get it? On there?
I, I did ask 525. I did request that originally. So yeah, I'm happy to request it again.
Yeah, maybe, maybe offline, we can see if there's not in some way to get that on there. I mean, I'm sure there's things that I don't understand that need to happen, but if it's, if it's waiting another two months for Personnel Board, that seems pretty extreme. So.
Yes, I'm happy to. I'm happy to do that. If that's what y'all would like me to do, I will send another message and see if we can't get that on earlier again.
Great. And the other changes that you're proposing was good to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Foster. Vice President Curry.
Thank you. Have to use Chief of Staff or can I call you Karen? Well, I'll defer to professionalism. Okay. Thank you, Chief Staff. I don't, I like the changes that you proposed in your breakdown of them based on your experience in the office, but not knowing kind of, there's a, there's a change in the what's it called? Range class?
Yeah, the comp group and the, or not the comp group, but the range. Yes, that's correct.
Yes, I'm sorry. So the range and there's been a shift. Can you share a little bit about that or like why that you led to that decision?
Yes, I'm happy to. So the, the position was a comp group 20 range 16, I believe. This, and now what I'm, what the new one is comfort 20 range 14. The city has very specific rules for the civil service in terms of what types of work are done and what types of comp groups. And so when I removed some of the higher level legis, citywide legisstar support and I reinforced more of the admin work aspects. I went to HR and talked about what inappropriate, we talked about what inappropriate category it would be. And as administrative assistant is the category that we agreed on. I, I wanted it as, I wanted to, I want, I, I think as you all probably also feel like we need highly independent folks who can, who are, are used to really taking a lot of projects on with, with you know, very autonomously and, and also able to, you know, cross train and do a quite a variety of work. And so the thing with the legislative management system specialist, when we're taking, when we're taking the focus away from legisstar only and putting it more on the, all the rest of the work that we, we do. It changes the category. So administrative assistant then is the appropriate category for that. It allows for more general, more general work that is being done in that, in that job description. And it was reviewed by HR. And HR gave me a determination that that was an appropriate category.
Thank you. I think it all looks good to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right. Not seeing any Karen. And thank you so much for bringing this to us. We, I think we'll, we'll go into a recess and wait for six o'clock at this point. So we will see, I will see everybody at six o'clock. Thank you. Actually, do we, I mean, do we, anybody think we need a motion for that?
I will move recess until 6:00 PM.
All right, I got it. Can I get a second from, actually Alder, Alder Vittor, do you have a comment about the job?
Yeah, I just had a question. Are we coming back on the same zoom?
Same like, yeah, so just turn off your cameras and
Thank you.
Yep, same zoom link. So can I get a second for Alder Foster's? All right, unless I hear otherwise, I'm going to assume unanimous consent. All right, perfect. We'll see everybody in 15 minutes. Same, same, same place. Thank you. Yep.
Okay, great. President Furman?
Present.
Vice President Curry?
Here.
Alder Bennett?
Here.
Alder Conklin?
Present.
Alder figure, a call?
Here.
Alder Foster?
Here.
Alder Heck?
Here.
Alder Abbas?
Here.
Great. Thank you. Welcome back, everybody. We are this evening considering applications received by the filing date on May 11th, 2022 at 4:30 PM to fill the upcoming automatic district three vacancy. Tonight CCC will make a recommendation for the appointment to the common council, which will happen at the conclusion of our Tuesday, May 24th common council meeting. Tonight I will be using Robert's rules. I may do want to start by thanking everybody who applied and for being here this evening. I know it's not necessarily easy to put yourself out there and, and do something like this. And we are greatly appreciative of you, you applying and being interested. We don't have, so I'm going to explain a little bit on the order of how, how things will go this evening. Attorney Haas, go ahead.
Thank you, President Furman. I just forwarded another email from a resident indicating that the video was still not working. And the registration site was not allowing them to register.
Okay, I'll pause for a second to see. Joe, if there's any, anything?
There's a short delay on the streaming, but it is working. So I'm not sure when that email was sent.
Yeah.
I'm just double checking it right now.
And, and I can confirm, I just went to YouTube and it is streaming live. I assume City Channel would be streaming live as well if YouTube is streaming live.
Yep.
So.
So we're up there. I'm not sure about the registration piece, but we've passed that anyway.
Correct. Thank you, Attorney Haas, and thank you, Joe. All right, back to my notes. Sorry about that. So tonight we'll, we'll be having two rounds of questions. The first round, each applicant will be asked five minutes to speak on questions that were provided to them beforehand that I will be asking during round one questions. Any alder, including members, the alders that are not members of CCEC can ask clarifying questions at the end of that applicant speaking. After a candidate has answered their questions, CCEC members will be using Survey Monkey to score that applicant. And at the end of the round one, all the scores will be tallied and be given, be provided to us. If, if, if alders don't mind, CCEC alders, if you don't mind raising your hand, if you have received the five emails from Survey Monkey for round one. You could either do that physically or with the raise hand button. I see two. Looking for some more hands.
I'm sorry.
Free for
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. No, no problem. Did you receive your Survey Monkey emails from Karen? Alder Bennett, go ahead.
Oh no, I'm just raising my hand.
Okay, perfect. So you're actually, thank you. All right. So and Alder Figaro Cole, go ahead. You got it?
Yes, I love a question. So the emails are not coming from monkey survey, they're coming from Karen, correct?
They're coming from Karen via Survey Monkey. They've got a, kind of got a weird, weird notation to them, but they should be Survey Monkey emails and there should be five, one for each candidate. All right, perfect. So.
But I'll check again.
Okay. And so everybody knows and for full disclosure, I mean, the three questions have a scale of, you know, so it would be unacceptable, poor, acceptable and exemplary. That, that has a ranking based on how we've previously done this of one to four. And so if you pick unacceptable, you're, you're scoring at one. If you pick exemplary, you're scoring at four. And at the end, we will be totaling up how many points each of the candidates had to figure out who gets to the next round. If, if there is a tie, we'll also be doing a ranked pair survey, which will, you'll get, you've gotten an email about hopefully already. We'll make sure that we get that in there and we'll use that as the tiebreaker at the end. If there's no tie, that we won't, we won't use the rank choice results, but the top three candidates will make it onto the second round of questioning. Unlike round one, which has a five minute time limit, round two will not have any time limit. Questions will be asked only by CCEC members. After a candidate has answered their questions, CCEC members will score that applicant using Survey Monkey, same scoring system. That email should arrive in your mailbox at about around 6:15. We'll check and make sure you got that before we start the next round. Seven total questions in round two. All the candidates provided the questions beforehand. And each member will be asking questions. In the event of a tie, we'll also be doing a ranked pair survey. But that will help with discussion. We'll discuss, you know, what that looks like. If we end up having a tie, we'll debate the results and decide what we want to do. And then we do have an item on our agenda to go ahead and refer a recommendation to the common council. So and then the only other note is applicants, applicants will be called in alphabetical order. Are there any questions from CCEC members, alders that are here or applicants about the process? Alder Heck, go ahead.
Thank you, President Furman. Could you just repeat the four possibilities on the scoring again? I was actually just able to find the email, but we've had so many emails. It might be good just to go over those four things again that we can choose.
Absolutely. So it's a scoring system from one to four and unacceptable would give them one point. Poor would give them two points. Acceptable will give them three and exemplary would give them four. And when you see it in Survey Monkey, it actually shows you, you know, just boxes for each of that.
The email had it going from zero to three. It will actually be one to four.
Behind the scenes, it is one to four. So if I hadn't, I, if I had noted earlier in another email that it was zero to three, that is not the case.
I think it was from the past or something.
It could have been the past. In the past, they used possibly PDF documents. And that may have had a different scoring system. I know for the previous vacancy, we literally copied the same scoring system and the same questions for round one and stuck to that.
Wonderful, it is.
Great. Robert, go ahead.
Will the order of the interviews in the second round be in the same alphabetical by last?
Yep. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and then get started. Our first interview will be with Robert. And so let me just get my timer going. Everybody hopefully gets up their survey and Robert, I'm going to ask you just all three questions and you can go ahead and answer them in any way you please. So the three questions are describe your involvement in civil activity, civic activities. What do you know about this position and why did you decide to apply for this position?
Excellent. Yeah. Thank you for this opportunity and everyone can hear me. Is that correct? All right. Great. Thanks for confirming. Yeah, I feel like it's everyone's responsibility to contribute their time with their community, to democracy and to local governance as much as they can. I've tried to make an active and concerted effort to do that over the last couple of years. And especially that happened coinciding with buying a house as well and feeling like this is a, a home that I'll be in for a while. What I've able to, been able to provide most is my communications experience and nonprofit management experience. And I've done that with a number of organizations locally and initiatives. One is serving as the secretary of the Rolling Meadows Neighborhood Association, managing communications, doing agendas and taking notes for meetings. As well as putting together our monthly newsletter to 300 residents. I've also volunteered and am now on the advisory board for Own It, Building Black Wealth, which is a private sector initiative here in Madison of real estate professionals. And they're working to decrease gaps in homeownership rates for people of color in Madison. And that's a great thing. I've really been proud to work with them as well over, over the last year. I'm also very dedicated to democracy and, and nonprofit organizing efforts. Right now I work with the Dane Counter Voter ID Coalition, and I've also worked at the polls as well in previous elections. One other way that I've liked to stay active is letter writing, often contribute to writing letters the other to the newspaper. Fortunate enough to have several of those published in the Cab Times. And I've also made an effort to write letters to boards and commissions in the past. Most recently, writing a letter to the Board of Park Commissioners about the dog free park policy procedures and just providing some advice and actually getting over a dozen residents to sign on to that letter and speaking at their meeting. About the position, I've learned a little bit just by watching the news, attending a couple of committee meetings in the past. Really importantly, I've learned a lot from Alder Lemmer. Serving as secretary at Rolling Meadows, often communicated her with, with, with her about updates she had, different legislation she had, and just also as a resident as well. I was fortunate enough to get a little bit of time with her before this application process to, to learn about it. She volunteered her time and and knowledge about what it took to be an alder and answered questions for myself and a couple of the residents. That was really important. I felt like that was good to see behind the curtain as well, a little bit to know if I wanted to apply. And from my sense of it, the alder position is, you know, multifaceted. You're a member of the common council. You have to care about the city, the goals of that group. You also need to represent your constituents in District Three, but also be a liaison between residents and the city services as well and helping them navigate that and also helping those departments communicate to residents. And as from what I've seen from Alder Lemmer, just being a local leader, helping people with problems, help solve problems. And I feel like those are really important aspects as well. Why I decided to apply, you know, I feel like this is a really good opportunity. I, you know, feel like there's a lot of skills to gain. I really would like to gain some experience for future ventures in public service. I very much like to, to serve and to serve other people. Alder Lemmer specifically encouraged me to apply. I felt like that was, I may not have otherwise, but you know, hearing good words from her, it really boosted my confidence and maybe want to learn more about it and see if it was something for me. And I definitely feel like it is. Personally, I am a communications consultant. I've worked with a lot of nonprofits, science nonprofits and communicating with lay-in professional audiences. I feel like that's my strongest skill set as well as project management and nonprofit management. And I feel like I could bring those skills to this position. And also kind of carry forward as it's an interim position, carry forward Alder Lemmer's priorities to communication, openness, transparency, fairness and equity with that skill set. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Robert. Are there any clarifying questions of anything that Robert said of, of any members, any alders that are here? Okay, thank you, Robert. CCEC members, please submit your, your, your survey for Robert and then we will move on to the, the next person. Okay. Alder, Alder Conklin, go ahead. You're muted.
Um, okay, I'm sorry. So was that all, all the three questions he kind of chose to answer in one lump together? Or is it each question, each question is separate? No?
No. So yeah, I mean, so we're, I'm, I'm asking all of them in one lump and then they can answer them, you know, and, and, you know, in order, you know, I, he, you know, answered each of them in, in order, you know, and, and you should just read it based on what you heard for those answers. So if you prefer, I, I think because they have five minutes, we're trying, I'm trying to give it to them and leave it up to them on how they want to use their time. But, you know,
Okay, so it was five minutes for the whole section, not five minutes per. That's where I was a little confused about. Okay.
Yeah, no problem. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to confirm if it's critical that we submit them now, or if we're able to listen to each respondent before submitting them.
All I could tell you is what was done in the past, which was asked for people to submit it after the fact. And so I would preferably like to stick to that. We can talk about changing that in the future. But I, you know, I think that's the process that I had sent out and probably would like to try to stick to, unless there are strong objections. Alder Heck, go ahead.
Thanks. I guess I didn't understand that. I did, after each question or after we're totally finished?
After we're totally finished with each applicant. So now that we're finished with Robert, you should be submitting the results of, of, of your survey for Robert.
Got it. Thanks.
Thank you, everybody. I know virtual makes this a lot more challenging. Otherwise we'd have sheets of paper in front of us. It'd be a lot easier. Alder Bennett, go ahead.
Just one last clarifying question. So I just received an email from Karen, round two.
Yep, that's for later. So that's just there.
Round one, Robert beats.
That's correct.
Okay, done.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Our next applicant that was on the agenda did withdraw this weekend. And so Andy Crass is, will not be applying this evening. And so we'll go on to the next one. Before we do that, I see Alder Conklin's hand is up. Go ahead, Alder Conklin.
Right. I need a couple more minutes. Can you just give me like another minute or two to, because I'm just getting the app, the survey up?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, okay.
Another moment. Okay, I'm seeing six, or at least the count to six. I'm, we're going to go, I'm going to go ahead and proceed to, we'll proceed to our next candidate. There we go. We got seven. All right. Our next candidate, Katie, I think I saw you a moment ago. Hi Katie, welcome.
Hi there. I just had to turn off my camera to do the superwoman stance, you know.
Excellent. Welcome. So hopefully you, you, I've heard you have five minutes. I'm, I'll ask you the questions and then, oh, go ahead. So I'm looking for you to describe your involvement in civic activities. What do you know about this position and why did you decide to apply for this position?
All right. And someone give me a thumbs up if you hear me. Okay. All right, thanks. I'm, I'm, I'll go in order. I, I know Robert and we are neighbors and I just realized I have some work on public speaking to do if I were to get this position because he's really good at talking. Um, so my involvement in civic activities, I I'm I could go back in my history of like a lot of little things that I've participated in and searched out. And but most recently, I'm, I'm, I re, I bought my first home back in December of 2020 in the Rolling Meadows neighborhood of District Three. And I think that that is where I really like jumped in to being like, okay, this is my home now. That Madison is going to be where I being like, okay, this is my home now that Madison is going to be where I am at. And how how do I take part in making this the community I want to live in and be as great as it can be. And so I I dragged my partner to the first Neighborhood Association meeting where I met Robert and then got to meet the board members of the Rolling Meadows Neighborhood Association on a very hot Saturday, I think it was a Saturday to spread mulch that was dumped at McGuinness Park to mulch this huge perennial bed and it was pretty pretty fun to get to meet some of my neighbors that way and and then I started just looking for other ways to be involved. Just like my neighbor Annie and I planted the flowers at the the park heads and and then I on the hot weeks, I would go drive over with buckets and I'd have to knock on like neighbors, people's doors to get water so I could keep them watered. And and just paying attention to the needs that are out there. And I first emailed with Alder Lemmer because I was just curious about like, hey, how like, is this really the end of rush pickup or is there going to be something else? It's like it was a late, it was a long summer and and things like that. And then I got to meet Alder Lemmer in person because we both oddly showed up on a snowy Saturday morning for cleaning up the Sycamore Dog Park and it was hilarious because the only way you found any poop was when you stepped in it. And I don't even own a dog, but I what an easy way to contribute contribute is to go and pick up a dog park. I do love dogs. And what I know about this position is that there is a lot that I'm going to be hearing a lot from a small group of people in that I will need to work hard in finding in listening to the people that aren't heard. And that it's my job to take that information to the city committees and boards and also relay the information and knowledge that I I can gain by reading policies and talking to people, you know, city employees and other people making decisions and putting policies together. And I know that Tuesday nights I won't be playing all, I wouldn't be playing ultimate frisbee anymore. I would be coming to coming council meetings. So I've put my frisbee team on alert. Then I'm finally why I decided to apply for this position again, similarly like Robert. I don't think I would have thought about it at this point in my life because I haven't dived in yet to a lot of service in my five minutes is up. And so let me just say that my my coworker asked me today, she says, Katie, is this going to fill your cup or did you just say yes to something because you can't say no? And I said, no, this is a really easy answer that I I am constantly seeking ways to be involved and make this world a better place and to help some help support people. And so I would be doing this. Whether I'm I'm going to be doing service, whether I'm in an alder position or not. So
Katie, thank you so much. Okay, any clarifying questions from alders? Okay, not seeing any. And so we'll go ahead and have everybody submit their results and then we'll go on to the next candidate in a moment. Looks like we have five responses. We're at six. All right, perfect. Now we're at seven. All right, our next candidate, Eric. See, you're with us, Eric. Welcome. Go ahead and same drill, you have five minutes. And, you know, Alder's smash questions if I have need to any clarifications about your answers. So I'm going to ask you the questions, which are describe your involvement in civic activities. What do you know about this position and why did you decide to apply for this position?
Great. And just to confirm, folks can hear me. All right. So well, great. Thank you, Alders, for having us tonight. I know you're going to be doing this a lot this summer. My name is Eric Paulson. I use he him as pronouns and I and my husband Ben live about as far east as you can go in District Three. I can look out my window and through my neighbor's yard and I can see the town of Blooming Grove. So I've lived in Madison for about 25 years and I've been out here in District Three for about seven years now. So first on the civic activities, while I've been in Madison, I've been involved in a number of activities. So time is brief. So to pick a few highlights, I was inaugural chair of the city's Digital Technology Committee. So besides kicking it off and getting it organized, I'll mention that I set up specific briefings for the council president and vice president to keep them updated as for what the committee was up to. And over the years, I testified regularly and observed committees like the Economic Development Committee, the Urban Design Commission, Plan Commission. And I also testified and gave extensive feedback when the E D C embarked on a review of the city's development process. In my neighborhood, I chaired a few developments, steering committees, it helped helped out on the executive committee for the association. On campus, I'm really proud of the work I did to get stable funding for the Tenet Resource Center to have a presence on campus. This was my priority and it took two years, but to accomplish things in a body, you have to be, you have to have patience and persistence. You have to understand why previous attempts had failed and you've got to work with others to make your issue their priority as well and roll up your sleeves to keep things moving. So I've been involved with other community groups and I'm proud to be known as someone that other people can come to and ask, who do we talk to about this? Over the years, I think I've become a good listener and I've always tried to center empathy. And I'm trying to be aware of who's not at the table or who's at the table and is being talked over by someone else. And if need be, can I use whatever power I have to be able to make space for them? I think something I'm good at, which is after listening to everyone and trying to understand where everyone is coming from, I think I'm good at being able to synthesize everyone's concerns into some action that we can put on the table and do, or at least be a starting point for a discussion. Sometimes those actions are small and just trust building, but they're always starting points and there's something we can do and something we can do together. So moving on to talking about the the job, we know the top line time commitment, but for being an alder, I think I know what I'm getting into. There's the top line responsibilities of the council, to set policy in conjunction with the state law and with the assistance of the boards and commissions. And then to be the approver of some of those applications of those processes, the council writes the rules for bars and then with the A L R C approves the individual licenses for the bars. The council writes, sets budget and sets levy, does a bunch more things. And the council is responsible to the entire city. But the council set up to ensure geographic diversity of its members and ensure that for everyone who lives in the city, there's someone who lives nearby them. So that for whatever issue, there's hopefully someone that knows the on the ground facts. But more than all of that, Alders are connectors. They help people navigate city process and answer questions or find the people that know the answer. And they reach out and inform when a city process is going to infect people in their district or in the city. Alders are conveners. They set up neighborhood meetings. They set up meetings between staff and developers or between groups of people who are all working on a common issue. Alders can help in conflict management and try and keep resources regular at the table to help mitigate problems. Finally, sometimes Alders are just catchalls. The last time I contacted Alder Lemmer was because I found a lost dog and I wondered if she'd seen anything about her. And I don't think that's actually in the job description. So on to why I'm interested in this position and I'm interested in this position because I want to get involved again. I went back to work about full time. I went back to work full time in 2013, thinking I could finish up my PhD over the part time over the next year. It actually took five years and that was only because I kind of cut back on everything else. And then in 2018, I finally finished. I decided to take a few years for myself and then we had a family medical challenge and then COVID turned the world upside down. So I've been dipping my toes back in recently, getting an older group started again and figuring out how to retool that. Thinking about what to do next. And then this opening occurred and I'll admit, this was bigger than where I thought I was going to jump in, but but I think I've got the skills and experience to help the district and help the city. The council's where things get done and I've got a lot I'd like to do. I know you can't come right in and do everything right away, but I promise you, I'm always going to have something cooking. If you select me as your colleague, I'm looking forward to have a chance to share my priorities with you and to learn about your priorities. I'm always going to be asking you, what can we do together? Madison can and should be a model city. We need to confront and reduce our egregious racial disparity. So Madison can be a model city for everyone. I would love an opportunity to be part of the council and work with you all to move Madison forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Any questions from Alders, clarifying questions from Alders? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So I'll ask that C C E C members submit their survey. We're still at six, so I've got one member who has not submitted yet. There we go. All right, perfect. So we'll go ahead and move on to Rhonda. Rhonda, welcome. Think you probably have the drill at this point, five minutes. The questions are, describe your involvement in civic activities. What do you know about this position and why did you decide to apply for this position?
As usual, I'd like to start with the volume check. Is this an adequate level? Thanks. Good evening. My name is Rhonda Smiley and I'm seeking appointment to the vacancy for the third district. I was born and raised in Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin. I was recruited into the R O T C department at the University of Wisconsin Whitewater and commissioned in the Army Reserves in 1985. I served in a reserve status until I was a captain in 1994. That's when I went on active duty in support of the Army Reserve and I remained on active duty until my retirement. My husband and I have lived in San Antonio, Texas, Sparta, Wisconsin, St. Louis, Missouri, twice, Carlisle, Pennsylvania, Washington DC twice, and we were in Onalaska, Wisconsin when I retired. We stayed in Onalaska until our son graduated high school. We had moved around so much during his early school years and since we were able to stay in Onalaska, we did so in order to give him a sense of a hometown and a high school graduation class. He graduated in June 2021 and we moved right thereafter. We knew we wanted a larger city with more amenities, but we are tied to Wisconsin as my mother is in residential care in Jefferson, Wisconsin. Madison's size, its amenities, its proximity to Jefferson and its reputation for good living drew us here. We moved into our Heritage Heights House in June of 2021. COVID protocols were all still in force, so we have not assimilated as quickly as I would have liked, but here we are. You have asked that I describe my involvement in civic activities. I've been involved in civic activities for much of my army career. I understand the importance of a well-written law, having worked with army lawyers and legislative specialists in order to change federal laws concerning the retirement of a specific class of soldier. I understand that laws can be altered during crisis because I was involved with the temporary alteration of military personnel law following the nine 11 attacks. Laws altered to allow us to quickly and efficiently respond. I understand federal funding streams to include limitations on appropriations and how often one fund cannot be spent on another thing. And I know they also come with expiration dates. I learned about interagency agreements by helping forge one between the Department of Labor and the National Committee for Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve, which is under the auspices of the Secretary of Defense. I have seen firsthand how a law meant to protect a group can cause extreme hardship for an individual who doesn't fit the neat little definition of that law. My last assignment allowed me to travel throughout 19 states, working with elected officials at all levels, county, city, state and federal, to foster a better understanding of what Army Reserve duty is and what it means to their district and their constituents. Yes, my civic duty is all tied to my army experience. However, I think it does leave me ready to jump in and hit the ground running for this temporary requirement. After describing my civic activities, I've been asked to say what I know about this position. I know that this is a part-time position and that it will take more time than I anticipate. It looks harder than I thought it would be and I hope it'll be more rewarding than I can currently imagine. I've been researching the details of life in District Three beyond what I currently know. I have reviewed all the materials under the new Alder Orientation Center sessions from 2021 on the Common Council website. I understand my responsibility to the district as well as to the council and the city. The third question was to describe, tell you why I decided to apply for this position. I decided to apply because for better or worse, Madison is where I will live from here going on forward as far as I can tell. And I do have a valuable skill set. It could be of use. And when I heard about the third district vacancy, I thought, here's a place I can offer my services for a temporary requirement. I would like to add, I reviewed everyone's application, their cover letters, their resumes. I don't think you have a dead in the group. So whomever you pick, it will be pretty wonderful for the city. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions? Okay, not seeing any. We'll go ahead and have Alders, C C E C Alders fill out their surveys. Okay, we've got seven responses. So we'll move on to our next applicant, Matthew. Matthew, I think you've heard the drill by now. You'll have five minutes and the questions for you to answer are describe your involvement in civic activities. What do you know about this position and why did you decide to apply for this position?
Perfect. Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for the opportunity. I assume if no one can hear me but sees my mouth moving, they'll just start waving. All right. So for the first one, civic activities, regular voter, I think we all are at this point. And then I had an internship while an undergrad with US Congresswoman Gwen Moore in her district office that was in spring 2017. So right after the 2016 election, it was pretty busy, lots of calls, as you can imagine. Like Rhonda, I also moved here in June 2021, so relatively new. Haven't really gotten an opportunity to be involved, but I am excited for the opportunity. What do I know about this position? Obviously, we're a member of the Common Council in District Three. The position would liaison between the community constituents in the council that helps that policy, regulation, law. Born into stuff like that and then be an advocate for the district, for the community and for those you represent. So why apply? I think it's a great opportunity to be involved. We have a duty, I think, as citizens to be involved for some like Rhonda, it's, you know, joining the army. For others, it's joining a common council on being involved in the community. So whatever it is, I think For others, it's joining a common council, being involved in the community. So whatever it is, I think we have a duty, and the answer should always be yes. That's about it. I'm not really a guy with a lot of words. I prefer to listen and go from there more analytical. So in the interest of everyone's time, if anyone has any questions, I can elaborate. Otherwise, yeah, thanks in advance.
I appreciate the eagerness to answer more questions, but we're not going to unfortunately do that in this round. Other, does anybody have any qualifying questions about any of Matthew's answers? Okay, not seeing any. So at this time, I'm like everybody to finish. So thank you, everybody. Thank you applicants for participating in round one. At this time, C C E C Alders, please fill out your, your last survey. And then if you can find an earlier invite for Pivot, we're going to do a also a ranking of the five candidates to use in the event there is a tie. When the scores are being added up, that was sent earlier this afternoon. I see at least one alder has clicked and signed up on that, but hopefully you guys can find that in your mailbox. Sign up for that pivot poll and then you can just drag your choices and rank them. Alder Bennett, I see you confused. Go ahead. Up, I can't hear you. You're muted.
Wait, what's the pivot poll? What email is that?
So it should be an email probably from around maybe one o'clock. If you actually just search your inbox for Pivot, P I, P I V O T. You should see a message called "election invite" is the subject it should be.
Oh, yeah, it was sent to my spam.
It looks like before we rush, we're still waiting for one. Yep, we've got all the responses from Survey Monkey, so I know Karen's tallying that up, but in the meantime, happy to answer any questions about getting those votes in Pivot, if you want to, you know, rank your candidates.
Yeah, am I still, am I unmuted? Okay.
You are.
Because it was sent to my spam.
Sure, happy to. Alder Conklin, go ahead.
Um, I can't seem to find mine either.
I'll resend yours.
Okay, thank you.
I'll get Alder Figurall call. Sorry, go ahead.
Thank you. So I created the account and I just have a blank page. And can you explain again?
Sure, absolutely. So you should be able to go to my, my elections.
Correct.
And then it should list D three vacancy round one. And then you should see unranked a list of five, the five members. And if you click on a name, it will actually add it to the ranked section. Once it's in ranked, you can move them around, but you should have one through five in the ranked section.
Okay, actually, yeah, when you first log in, it takes a while to refresh. So there was nothing there, but now it's there. Got it.
Perfect. And my apologies, I'm rescinding Nikki. You're in, hold on one second. Alder Foster, go ahead.
I just wanted to confirm with the pivot that once you've moved them to the ranked and put them in the order you want. I checked the box that said reviewed, but there's no like submission button or anything like that, correct? It's once they're up in the ranked section, you're done?
Yep, once they're up there and then you've clicked reviewed. So that's a good point. And it looks like I've got, you know, votes from, from two elders so far. And now I've got votes from three. Alder Conklin, are you still waiting to ask your question? The invite should have been resent. Alder Figurall call, are you waiting to ask a question? Alder Heck, go ahead.
Thank you. I just want to verify that the tie boxes, if we choose to rank to the same, then we check the box next to both of them.
I believe that's how it works, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
We just confirmed me. So when you click review, that's when it's minutes?
Um, yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Looks like we're just waiting for Alder Conklin to get logged in and for Alder Figurall call to vote. Thank you, everybody.
I'm sorry.
Patience. No, that's okay.
Because I'm in my elections now, but I don't see the D three.
Um, so go ahead and refresh the page when you're in my elections. It sounds like it might take a moment to show up. That's what somebody else had said.
I've never been on this site before. I had a.
Yeah, it's, it's Alder's using it as new, but I will say it has been used in previous vacancies. So it's not the first time, I think, in the past, because we were in person. Queasy was, when we had Queasy as the chief of staff, he actually logged it for everybody. They wrote it down on paper. And so now we're just having people do it directly. And certainly, I appreciate everybody's patience, but it is, it is helpful. And then I do know that our chief of staff is tallying the other scores to see if this is ultimately necessary. Alder Conklin, is it still not showing up for you? You're muted.
I was saying it was still not showing up.
Okay, I'm going to try sending a different invite to you. See if this one works. Alder Figurall call, go ahead.
Please confirm you received my information?
I, we, I, it does, it has a checkbox and says that you have voted, so I assume it is locked up. Thank you. Alder Foster, go ahead.
Just wanted to mention that Alder Conklin, probably make sure you're using your city email for your login. Otherwise, it might not show the election for you, I'm assuming.
But everyone, President Furman just sent me.
Yep.
I see.
You're in.
Okay, okay, okay.
Now you just gotta move that up to the reviewed section and the ranked section, rank them, and then click reviewed when you're done.
Did mine come in?
It did. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And then so now we're just waiting for the Survey Monkey results, and then I will announce what we have for, for the second round. Again, I appreciate everybody's patience. Okay, I have received the results, and we've also tallied the results from Pivot. It does not look like we have a tie. So we will not be using that, but it, but it is interesting to see that, and I appreciate everybody filling that out. So our top three candidates. And again, I really want to thank all, everybody for having spent time here this evening and applying and encourage you to find a city committee to get involved in and definitely stay involved. I really need people to be, continue to be active in our community, and so we very much appreciate that. Going to the next round will be Eric Paulson, Robert Beats, and Rhonda Smiley. So thank you, everybody, for, for participating, and we'll move on to the next round.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. So the format of the next round is we don't, we do not, it will be seven questions that have been provided already to the applicants. We will go in alphabetical order. And Alders have, C C E C Alders have received a copy of a survey. For, for the survey, assume that Robert is applicant, first applicant. The second would be Eric and Rhonda would be the third. We're, we'll go ahead and jump right in. So we'll first start with Robert Beats. Robert, I see you're with us. The first question of the evening will be coming from Alder Heck. Alder Heck, go ahead.
Okay, I'll start it off. What knowledge, skills, and resources do you already possess that will help you become an effective interim alder?
All right, thank you for that question. Just a procedural question I wanted to ask real quick. Just take whatever time I need to answer it thoroughly and we'll move forward. Will you ask qualifying questions after each question, or will, you know, other questions come at the end?
Um, there, if, if C C E C members have qualifying questions, they, they can ask. I'd probably like to try to stick to the end. Unless there's any strong objections from C C E C members, I want to try to keep you in a flow opposed to interrupting with, with clarifying questions. But so hopefully members can just take notes. But yeah, there is no time, you know, so use whatever time is necessary that you think to answer the question.
Great. No shot clock helps. Definitely reduces the pressure a little. Well, thank you for that, that question. I feel like I have a variety of experience, professional and personal. A bit of, bit of that I explained with my civic experience previously, but my knowledge comes from living in Madison in multiple contexts. I've lived here as a student. I've lived here as a working professional. I've really tried to stay on top of current events, reading the news. I'm not quite a politics junkie where I'm, you know, at the council meetings till, till 2:00 AM or stuff like that, but definitely watching the news, watching public debate. Opinions that are coming together for that. Part of my history of being in Madison is that I've lived in many different neighborhoods, lived on the Green Bush neighborhood. I lived downtown as a student, and also downtown in a, a new apartment building, and now I own a home on the east side. I feel like those different contexts have helped me give a good breadth of understanding the city, different housing arrangements, different financial configurations as well, and complexities of, of living here is, as a different kind of roles and responsibilities and timelines. With my, with regard to my skills that you asked, I am a communications professional. I'm a consultant. I do that freelance. I mostly work with science, health, and environment nonprofits. That's given me a lot of experience working with a breadth of topics. I've worked with everything from forestry, environment, natural resources, public health, preventive medicine, as well as violence prevention, agriculture. So it's really given me a good, a good range of, of skills and knowledge bases and experts to go to when I have questions for things. Working in nonprofits, I've a lot of project management experience as well as coordinating communications, external, internal, coordinating committees. Seeing projects through from, from start to finish. In that context, being a consultant, I feel like I am become very thorough. I know how to ask questions. I know who to follow up with. Very patient, waiting for people to get back to me. Most of my work involves working with volunteers. Involves working with people who are giving their time, and it's in addition to their job, and that context really kind of takes a lot of time sometimes at nonprofits. I feel like with being an alder, I would be very resilient, very good listener. And have empathy as well to understand people, different kinds of people for myself. And to understand the best of my abilities, where they're coming from. With regard to resources, I feel that I have the time and availability to do this position. Being a consultant and being allowed to set my own hours really gives me some flexibility during the day to meet with city staff when necessary to make meetings and to meet my obligations to constituents as well as my roles on committees and meetings of the council. Personally, I, I ride the bus. I have a bike and a car. I feel like I can bring those and to the equation. You know, pandemic has changed how people move around and, and experience their city, but yeah, I think using those different modes really helps me understand stuff. And I see a lot of dialogue in the community right now about you know, people who don't bike don't understand what it's like, people who, you know, are concerned about traffic issues are not understanding. So I think those resources are good to bring and that experience as well. And then I do in Rolling Meadows, I haven't lived on the east side that long, only a couple of years, but I do have familiarity with local leaders, thanks to, you know, volunteering here, that's as well as, you know, at the county level, working with Alder Lemmer, presenting on behalf of Own It, presentations at other neighborhood associations as well. And communicating with city staff occasionally in my capacity as Secretary of Rolling Meadows. All right, that's all.
This one. Thank you, Robert. Vice President Curry, you're next.
Too many screens. Please describe the ways you practice and demonstrate equity and inclusion and how you would model these practices in this assignment. It's a two-part question. Please provide an example of measures you've taken to further your knowledge of equity, inclusion, and racial justice.
Thank you. Thank for the question. Yeah, over the last couple of years, I've definitely taken time to self-educate about issues related to race, power, equity, equality, democracy, as well as systemic racism and systemic oppression. That's been important to learn more, and I, I feel like that's a really self-evolution that's important to take. And I've tried to apply what I've learned in those contexts to my different work and volunteering capacities. In one, in one way, that's working with committees at organizations of my clients that are specifically focused on diversity and equity, but other committees that are either planning meetings or initiating projects and making sure that those projects integrate those ideas, concepts, and goals as well. I've specifically worked with Own It as a volunteer, and now I'm on their advisory board as well, donated a lot of my time to them and helping them with largely, you know, my expertise is not in real estate or in finance, but as a communications capacity, I would say that is working with diverse team in that context, learning a lot more about the duality and spectrum that you get from or the interplay rather between homeownership and wealth building. It's really important concept that I've learned a lot more about. I've definitely kind of applied that understanding lens in my own community in understanding how real estate works a lot more. Since after kind of going through a home buying process myself. So definitely more self-educating there and kind of understanding that context. I think it's important for an alder to understand. As well in, in my professional work, I've had the chance to work with the American College of Preventive Medicine as well as the National Violence Prevention Network. I've learned a great deal. as well as the National Violence Prevention Network. I've learned a great deal from experts in population health, public health. And how they are using data to make informed decisions about policy, how they're communicating with policymakers. And I've helped them, I've helped bring my communication skills to them to create content to spread the word about the concepts that they're trying to advance in different policy levels, largely those were at State Department Health Levels. But I think those contexts really come into play a lot with the decisions that the common council has to address. With equity and inclusion, I feel that communication is really the central piece of that. It's, it's involved in listening, it's involved in empathy. As several people have said, I think really kind of comes into play with your outreach priorities. Are you centering the right voices? Are you talking to the right people? Are you making sure that the people that aren't just coming to you are also being heard and you're making an effort to hear them and understand what they're saying? I feel like the role of an alder is not just to be the only one speaking in the room, but to also amplify the voices of the people in your community. I think that's really important and I see, I was fortunate to see Alder Lemmer do that, bringing other people to committee meetings. Encouraging people like myself to, you know, either apply for this position or she was really good at beating the drum of, as Alder Ferma just did as well, encouraging people to apply to boards and committees. So, you know, I think that's good of kind of bringing the wealth of talent from your community to the city, to governance and decision-making as well. It's not just on you to be a gatekeeper. It's, it's you to be a team leader as well. In, we also asked for the example of specific measures. Right now I'm organizing a meeting for a nonprofit and we are currently I'm leading an effort to improve our reporting. So the association, the International Neuroethics Association, which is involved in ethics and brain research, they've really had a commitment to be more proactive about diversity and equity. And I don't want them to just have empty words there, but actually measure what they're doing, how well they're implementing those policies and report on that and have some transparency in that regard. That's kind of one way that I'm trying to bring what I've learned personally and what I've learned from other organizations and volunteering opportunities to the clients that I have. And I feel that I can also bring that to the council and also learn from, you know, a lot of the great work that you guys are doing and that I've heard about as well.
Thank you. Alder Conklin is next.
Hi, Robert. What are some of the critical issues facing District Three?
Thank you for that question. Some of the things that I would, I would point out, I'm going to slightly, because I know one of the questions is what are the city issues? So I'll try to focus on stuff I feel that is a little bit more priority in District Three, or at least perceived priority. One of them to, to me, I think priorities that other people have and what I've seen in talking with neighbors is crime and safety. I think this is definitely a concern citywide, but I, I feel that in our neighborhood recognition of that, recognition of the range of types of safety and crime issues as well. And the importance to really think about the actual impacts on people's lives as well as the perceived impact. Or even the perceived impact of the interventions that the city council might be recommending or policy experts might be recommending to address the problem. There's really a lot of potential pushback on those things, especially if you're not educated on the matter, because they can be very complex, especially in, you know, population level matters. I feel personally, you know, doing that in a data-informed policymaking approach is important. That's one issue I feel is pretty critical in District Three. I also feel kind of the umbrella, the domain of things under economics are pretty important over here. One is taxes, you know, Alder Lemmer specifically mentioned recently, you know, possible pushback to recycling taxes. Property taxes going up. I think inflation is an issue, just the monetary values that people are facing and the livability of Madison will, you know, could possibly change a lot based on some of those numbers. I also feel that the location of where jobs are in town versus where people live could really change the dynamics here in District Three. The bus schedule changed, you know, are people able to get to their jobs? Has gas, you know, become too high? So monetarily, I think those issues need to be thought about at the city level and I think people in District Three will have a very good perspective to bring to that as well. And I hope to, you know, help coalesce that perspective. And then the, the last piece for District Three, I felt was the community environment type range of issues. When I say that, I kind of mean community networking. The pandemic has definitely thrown that off a bit, community connections. I feel like it's important that we have youth programming and I know Alder Lemmer is kind of want to make that one of her priorities. So I feel like that's really a critical one. I'd also say cross-cutting programming that, you know, brings people of different ages together, brings people of different backgrounds. I think that's something to probably prioritize as well as we try to do more in-person activities. Parks are a great place for that, mobile, mobile things as well. In that spectrum, I also say pollution and growth are critical under, under the citywide issues. I think I've talked more about growth, but you know, I see that being pretty critical as well. And that, those community connections, I think, really relate to problem solving and how much we as a local group, don't just rely on the city to solve problems, but able, are to do them here, rely on mutual aid, you know, and really enforce what neighbors can do for neighbors. And that's something I love to stress as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Our next question would be from Alder Bennett.
Awesome. One second. There's so many tabs. Okay, question number four. Provide an example of a time that you took a lead role either at work or in your community.
You've got tabs and I've got some post-it notes, so I think we're all in it together. Yeah, a lead role, like I mentioned, this letter writing was one thing that I've, you know, really been a little bit, you know, been really started out trying to be intentional about. One thing is that I'm a kind of an introspective person, slightly introverted. I can turn it on when I need to, but I don't get charged from people. So I really like to sit down, put my thoughts together. And as a communicator, I like to do that in writing and presenting those to others. One time that I took a lead in that is I was walking my dog and I saw that the park that was a block away from my house, Kingston, I said, become dog free. A big part of purchasing my home in this area was that you could bring your dog there once those rules changed, thankfully. And for the most part, you know, I think that rule is great, but I was really disappointed to just see a sign up one day. I really wanted to provide my feedback about how I thought that process could be more transparent, how they could seek more input. And I felt that that was kind of a missed opportunity to engage with the community and, and talk about the importance of having dog-free parks. I wrote a letter to that effect, had some recommendations on how I thought the process could be better, mostly process-oriented things. And again, that's communications and process are kind of areas that I like to focus on and excel and in my capacity as consultants, that's really what a lot of my work is. In doing that, I consulted Alder Lemmer when I had a draft. She gave some feedback. I thought that was a great experience. And then I got over a dozen other neighbors to sign onto that letter in just a couple of days. I put that up on social media. I'd seen in the notes, someone else had submitted something to the, to the park board. I contacted them and submitted that as well as registered to go to their call in November and just voiced my concerns as well to bring more attention to the letter. And I felt that was a good experience to do. I've definitely had a lot of people say thank you and, you know, I, I hope that there's more transparency in the next round of revisions.
Thank you. Our next question will come from Alder Foster.
Hey, Robert. What are some of the critical issues facing the city?
Thanks for that question. I think there are a lot of issues. There's a set that I felt was important to pull out or to talk about here that I didn't talk about in District Three. One of them, in working with Own It and seeing more housing and real estate and wealth building stuff, I feel like the housing and inequity are two areas that are really critical here. Decisions that are made decades in the past can affect people for decades to come. I feel like we don't get ahead of things related to that. We don't disadvantage people right now and really make a proactive effort to reverse those issues and not just create, you know, neutral policies is really important. Within housing, that's really affordability. You know, if we're gonna, if this is gonna be a great place to live, people have to actually be able to live here and want to live here. As I mentioned, I lived in several different places across the city. I think I've gained some experience, understanding a lot of those concepts and volunteering with Own It. I've learned really a great deal in that respect. Schools, I think, are absolutely critical. It's the focal point for a lot of people in our community. I believe that it should also be really supported a lot more community-wide, even people who don't have students in, who aren't parents or grandparents. That support network really needs to be bolstered. Learning more about how teachers' strikes happen. Just, you know, reading about that and talking with others who are teachers, I feel like if we're stressing our teachers out so much, the community really needs to have their support, either mutual aid or if it's related to a strike. And I hope things don't kind of come that far, but it seems to be a really large pressure point there in teacher retention and payment and as well as safety. And I think these are really difficult questions for, you know, a large district or even a small district to address, but that's a big one on my mind. As a science and environment-focused person, I also feel resources are critical, water, you know, energy, waste, food. These are absolutely dynamic issues that have far-reaching consequences and impact people in different ways. No, no one-size-fits-all. I think that's going to be a critical issue in our area in multiple ways. And then I mentioned before, I, I feel growth is one that is an issue that is just going to exacerbate all other issues. It's one that we really need to think about. And we also need to, when we create policies, to address something, not overly advantage one interest group, you know, to where that then disadvantages someone else or creates problems because, especially when it comes to infrastructure and jobs, you know, I really think they're gonna, there're gonna be long-term consequences and, and growth is itself a long-term trend to think about. But it's one that makes all the other ones tough, just like, just like political will and all those things. Those are on my mind and I know the common council's got a lot of other specific issues that I've seen come up recently, but as domains, I feel I can bring some expertise and communication skills to those.
Thank you. Our next question is from Alder Figaro Cole.
Thank you. Hi, Robert. This is kind of a long question, one that we face almost every council meeting. You receive a lot of feedback from residents surrounding a project in your district. Your general sense is 60% are in favor of the project and 40% are against it. How do you balance public feedback against policies, goals and priorities? What steps did you take into consideration to arrive at your position?
I think for that question. This one's pretty. This one's difficult. I think each, each each issue might be a little bit different. I think there, but no matter what, there are going to be divisive issues or split issues in, no matter what, you know, every cycle, probably every meeting even. So that invariability doesn't mean you can't have a process. I would say, from what I've seen, what I've heard from Alder Lemmer is to be resilient, to listen and to seek out more advice when you need more feedback. You know, I think that is one saying, you know, you're getting feedback, but it's important to recognize that that is not all of the public sentiment or public opinion. It is a tiny subset and it's critical to try to understand at least the best you can what that means for you know, the actual public, you know, so that general sense phrase is really important there. And I think it's understanding our limitations as, as alders and representatives. From the, you know, interplay between public opinion and orienting goals, I think it's critical to remember that the goals of the common council, the calls that are either overtly stated or are public sentiment in your district are important to, to think about. Whether it's, you know, really do a specific project or just a domain of issues. And those are things to to weigh. And I think it's important to think about who is bringing what issues to you and who are the stakeholders involved? Are, are the people that are being helped by a program or, or being serviced, you know, really getting a massive benefit? Or are they, you know, are the complaints more, more minis, less important than perhaps the program itself or the, or the good that it does? I think that's pretty critical. I, I feel as I'm a communications person, that it's really important to, to center the goals. This is really a critical piece in framing and how to bring issues to people. I would say that, you know, in communication, in conversations with people, talking about the goals and kind of understanding whether or not people agree on the goals. Getting to that crux of it is pretty important to understand whether or not they, the drawbacks, the negatives, the unintended consequences are just the issue or whether we don't really agree on the goals. And I feel like transparency, openness, communication about the process, about how things work and having building up relationships with people along the way and with other community members can really help lay the groundwork for good communication, understanding later on in the process. Thanks.
Thank you. So I have the last question, which is, how do you reach District Three residents who are not engaged in traditional ways like neighborhood associations?
Yeah, I think neighborhood associations are great. I've volunteered at one. I think that's just one network in the community though. You know, we have faith groups, we have schools, we have school programs, we have athletic programs. I really do think that employers and landlords as well are important conduits to other constituencies where they have contact as well. So as a communicator marketer, I also think, you know, what is the one-to-one communication cost? You know, it is great to be open and talk to people, but also how do we leverage economies of scale? There's only so much time to give and, you know, making a connection with somebody who can represent those ideas, communicate your messages to others is really important to prioritize. Another, you know, group, another item to prioritize is who are you talking to? Who is not being seen, who is not coming to the forefront or bringing questions directly to you, but how do you go to them? I think a key piece of that is sometimes, you know, Katie, you know, kind of mentioned this, sometimes things are very formal and it's tough to, you know, feel comfortable in a space. Even just being here and, and talking to this degree, you know, makes me a little bit uncomfortable because it's formal, but I, you guys do it all the time. I think when we are helping people be more comfortable, talk, talk about themselves, talk about their community and their perspectives, I think that really helps. And sometimes to get people started, informal settings are important. I feel, you know, that can help a little bit more, you know, things are billed as listening sessions, but maybe we have, you know, dog walks, maybe that's just meetups in the park that are, that Alder goes to or is actually organizing as well. Another way to reach people, I feel, is, are through city services. That is, you know, learned a lot more about what mobile services are available. I think that approach to getting out in communities, bringing, you know, arts, play activities out there as another hub to also do other things related to networking, organizing and community building. And in addition, I feel working with communications departments, I'm always trying to see across there, how can you make things more efficient? How can Alders work together to not have to reinvent the wheel every week, every month related to how they're communicating? And how can city departments and Alders work together to streamline those efforts as well? So, you know, one person is working on something and then everyone uses it. The, those efficiencies can really help because it shows you up to, you know, gives you a little more free time to do other connections and build relationships. And then there's just another tactic, I feel like that is fun and sometimes overlooked. And this is Alder Ferma, why I asked about available funds for, for things is sometimes just business cards, sometimes table tents work, printing things, getting them in people's hands, maybe you don't see it, maybe they hand it to somebody else. As an interim alder, I wouldn't want my name on it, but it should say District Three Alder. It's got the email. uh, giving them in people's hands, maybe you don't see it, maybe they hand it to somebody else. Um, as an interim alder, I wouldn't want my name on it, but it should say District Three Alder. It's got the email, it's got the website, and I really feel that, um, I think when I talked to Alder Limer, she, she believed that was about fifteen hundred people had signed up for the newsletter and get that regularly. Open rates is one thing to watch. Um, and that's about ten percent of the district, you know, if that's fifteen or twenty percent, that is a, a market improvement. Um, I also feel that speaking engagements, uh, are a critical thing, and um, that's how I learned about what an Alder is, is seen, uh, seen Alders talk about their, their community, seen Alders write, uh, write opinions in newspaper, and I've really appreciated one. I, I lived in, uh, East Capital, so, uh, Alder Heck, I appreciated your representation as well, um, and, uh, your vocalness and those are important aspects for the Alders serve, and I think there's a lot of ways to get out there and, and reach many people in the community. Thanks.
Robert, thank you so much. Um, are there any clarifying questions by C C E C members of anything that Robert, uh, said this evening? Uh, Vice President Curry, go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, Robert. Um, I liked how in the question about, uh, issues the city is facing, you kind of had an example that led to the, like, environmental policy or safety. When you mentioned safety, you didn't have, um, many examples, and I just wanted to know if you had, could share one or two with us of, um, citywide safety prioritizations you would amplify in this role.
Yeah, you know, I, I feel traffic safety is a big deal. Um, you know, I, I said that uh, a little bit in District Three was why I prioritized to hear is we had a lot of speeding, um, uh, notices. Um, Alder Limer's really, you know, tried to get a good deal of work done on, uh, getting additional, uh, traffic lights um, as well as changing speed limits and, uh, you know, more reporting. Um, so in in the District Three is when I, I'd mentioned that, I felt like that was important here. Um, safety as well, I, I feel, you know, crime in general is an issue, burglary, um, you know, is thing that kind of happened a little bit more with the pandemic or is at least perceived, um, and is being talked about more. Um, those are things in District Three as well that are, um, you know, I feel the priority, citywide, uh, safety. Can't say, I, I feel like there's, you know, another issue that I would, I highlight over other ones, but those two felt like the most important here.
Thank you.
Okay, any other clarifying questions? Hey, not seeing any. Um, ask Alders to submit their, um, uh, survey for, um, uh, the first applicant. I did change the name, um, to Robert. Um, you may or may not see that, um, but you should have an email uh, in your mailbox for a first applicant, and when you load it, um, you don't need to reload it, um, but if, if you're just loading it now, you can, um, see his name there. And then we'll continue once we've got those, uh, responses in. Uh, Vice President Curry, go ahead.
Did anybody else get a prompt about it's been modified and your answers won't be say, okay?
That's my fault. So that's for changing the title. I'm sorry. I should be able to refresh.
Point, point of order, uh, Vice President Curry, would I be able to also add to my answer there?
Um, I, we're, well, we're gonna hold off. Thank you, though, Robert. I appreciate that. Hey, um, Alder Figaro Cole, go ahead.
I just want to confirm, did you receive the?
We do. We do have seven, we do have seven replies, so I assume everybody got in their replies. Um, so we're gonna move on to Eric Paulson, and I will say, um, make sure that before you start filling it in, you refresh, and it does say his name um, in your email, that should have come through as the second applicant, but when you load it on the website, it should have Eric's name. Um, and, uh, with that, I'm gonna turn to Alder Heck to ask the first question.
Thank you. Um, I'm unmuted now. I have to find the e- email window. Okay, got it. Uh, Eric, what knowledge, skills, and resources do you already possess that will help you become an effective interim alder?
Uh, thank you for the question and, and thank you all for, uh, your, your rankings earlier. I'm thrilled to be through to the second round. Um, so I touched on a lot of, uh, uh, skills and resources, uh, in my, my intro, uh, and then my, my letter, and then in the, the first set of questions, but I wanted to dig into a, a few more details. Uh, so first off, I think I'm reasonably ready to hit the ground running. Now, I know I've got a ton to learn. Every Alder I've ever talked to said that they didn't understand the job until they did it, so I'm not at all going to suggest that I can just slot rate it. You know, I'm gonna ask, uh, all sorts of questions on committees and bodies for things that Alder Limer learned years ago. I'm just gonna have to trust that you're gonna have patience with me. But I think I'm starting from as strong a place as you can find for, in, for an interim alder, given that none of the previous Alders, uh, applied, though I did bug a couple of them that maybe, hey, maybe you should, uh, jump in here, so. So I'm hopeful that, given how many new Alders there's gonna be, uh, this summer, that you all are gonna have to bring on onboard this summer, that, um, we'll all be able to learn from each other in that maybe we could do some joint, some joint trainings, uh, and, and learn from each other as, as like twenty percent of the council's gonna turn over, uh, here in the nearest future. So, uh, but some specific things, I've been on city committees, I've worked closely with city staffs, uh, when I need information or have a question for staff, I generally know who to go ask. I've run big meetings, I've run small meetings, I've managed meetings where tensions were high and have worked hard to be able to bring those meetings back on the track. Uh, we've got a really able city attorney, so, uh, I do know how to use Roberts, but we've got the city attorney there, but I also know how to run meetings where I know how to keep the meetings effective where you relax Roberts, right? You don't need to be a stickler about it to help people, uh, move through it. You know when to fly and when to back off, uh, to, to, to keep things moving, uh, where you might be formally required to use Roberts, but sometimes, sometimes don't press on those buttons right away and help people get to the right motion that they're trying to make. I understand how the council agenda works and what's going on there, and I understand how legislative items flow through the process through introduction of the meeting, uh, bodies and referrals back up. Um, I've read parts of the budget, I've, uh, got sent questions to finance about the budget and asked questions about, uh, hey, what does this mean about this particular Tiff district? I'm pretty well-versed on what the county's doing, though I admit to being pretty, uh, I find the MMSD process still pretty incomprehensible. But um, after COVID, uh, my network of folks in the cities, it's not quite as strong as it once was, but I'm really looking forward to renewing that, uh, and growing that, and so I'm gonna ask a number of you to help me to maybe make some introductions. Uh, I'm not a great public speaker. You have no idea how white knuckles I am, held the aunt to my chair right now and how stiff a drink I'm gonna pour myself when this is all over. Um, but, but I'm an okay writer, um, and so I think if I'm an alder, I'm gonna be a pretty active blogger as an alder. Um, I'm someone who I prioritize is getting information out. Uh, I'm a really firm believer in open government, uh, open records, open data. And if there's information that I get as part of a process or an email somewhere, um, I'm gonna be pretty active in, in getting it out and making that out to the public or press so they can better understand the issue. And so I won't ever betray any confidences, uh, but I won't also ever enter into any conferences that I can't ethically or legally make. So that's my commitment here. Um, I'm pretty good with technology and data, and I hope be part of the conversations about how do we get more people to interact with the city, uh, online from home, uh, but I also really want to make sure that, uh, we're finding ways to make it easier for people to, uh, interact with the city who either don't have or choose not to have, uh, online access or computers at home. We, we don't want to rush all to online while leaving folks behind here, so. I'm really interested in being collaborative and I'm really interested in getting things done, uh, and so I'm really looking forward to being able to work together and, and pass things, so. Um, so yeah, that's kind of where I'm at.
Thank you. Our next question will be from Vice President Curry.
Hi, Eric. Uh, two-part question, I'm pretty stacked. Please describe the ways you practice and, and demonstrate equity and inclusion and how you would model these practices in this assignment. And please provide an example of measures you have taken to further your knowledge of equity, inclusion, and racial justice.
Sure. Um, I'm gonna answer that, uh, in reverse order. Uh, and I'm gonna do two examples, one where I failed and one where I think I got something done, because I think there's lessons I want to highlight from both of them. And so the first one where I, uh, you know, for examples of measures I've taken, uh, and I want to talk about one that I kind of failed at, um, and I'm gonna tell a little bit of a long story here. I used to be a, a opinion writer with the Badger Herald. And I know this will be shocking to you, but someone on the UW campus did something racist. Um, and don't ask me what it was, I've lost track of it, but anyway, we came back from Thanksgiving and something had happened, uh, and the Badger Herald opinion page said, okay, we're gonna do this experiment. Everyone is gonna write about diversity. You can't say the word diversity or there's like, you can't just write about diversity, you've got to write about some aspect of it. Everything we publish on the opinion page is gonna be that, so all the writers are gonna do this. Every letter, the editor, that's all we're gonna publish is something that's about, uh, diversity. Um, and so I headed off to Barnes and Noble, and I bought as many books as I could find. And I went home and I crammed and tried to read as much as I could to try to put together some kind of column, uh, for, for my column that, for that week, um, and I just said I was gonna try and write about white privilege. Um, and, and I tried, and friends, let me just tell you, it was terrible. It was, it was awful. I could even, I could tell then it was bad. Um, and, and looking back on it several years later, I've seen just how really awful it was. Um, and I'll just say that I was saved, uh, because some classroom doctor be, uh, require, giving students extra credit if they sent letters in, uh, uh, to the Herald about this. So the Herald discontinued the experiment the day before my column was supposed to run, and I was able to substitute it out for something different. But the point here is that I tried to learn all this from a book. Um, quickly, try cram it all in, and it didn't work. I didn't get it at all. Uh, what I put out was, was not good, um, and instead, what I've been doing is trying to be better about listening. Not trying to get it just from the book, but listening when people are talking about people, color is just playing it. Well, how are they describing? And I don't want to like try and take their words exactly, but I need to understand uh, how they're framing it and, and figure out where do I fit in and, and how do I take the lead from that? So, one place where I was a little more successful, and, and by the way, I just actually want to be really clear about this, that there are a lot of people who are doing really great anti-racism work, and like, I'm about to cite an example here, and I'm not trying to present this as like, you know, hey, I've done fantastic, uh, anti-racism work here. This is like, I need to, be really clear about this. This is, um, a, a, a small offering in, in place of, in, in a field where people are doing really great work, but, um, my last committee meeting as chair of the Digital Technology Committee, the city had just kind of rolled out the Equity Toolkit. Um, and they just kind of finished and were just starting to talk about it as something that, that they had as a, had as a thing, and I didn't know what it was. It's like, I have no idea what it is. Was it a, uh, thought of video training? So is it a, an app? I think it was some spreadsheets. I, I didn't know. Um, but I thought this sounds like it's something important. It sounds like it's something that the Digital Technology Committee should know about, and this wasn't yet rolled out as like, everyone's gonna do it. Um, but so I, so I cracked down staff and said, can you come and tell us about this? And it was great. It, um, it, it was really eye-opening, and it gave, it set out for committees a process for how they should be doing things, which even setting aside the racial equity parts of it, it was like, you know, actually, we should have this as more training for, for committees in general, but it also, uh, gave a lot of things, gave a lot of things that we should be considering. So here's a process we should be following, and here are all these questions that we should be asking, uh, that, that fit into that. Uh, and, and it was just like exactly what that committee needed. Um, but then, uh, it was right near the end of the, uh, because of the way the calendar fell, uh, that was my last meeting. Uh, I supported Alder Resnick in that mayor election. My term ran out. Mayor Sogma did not reappoint me, and so that was the last time I was, uh, involved in the committee, so I don't actually know if the committee took that to heart, but I really hope they did, because I think it did give them a framework, and a lot of what they were setting out to try to do would have been beneficial from having asked those questions, um, when they're looking at what are they trying to do, who's here, who's not here, um, and, and what can we be doing more with it? So, uh, onto the first part of your question, describing practices and equity. I work as a software developer for an HVAC company. Um, as you might imagine, that is a pretty white and male space. Um, and so I try to be, um, I try to be, um, when I'm there calling things out, um, hey, this panel is all men. Hey, everyone in this marketing campaign is white, right? We gotta do better than that. I try and be really sensitive in meetings when people are being talked over. Um, this happens a lot to, uh, women in our, our company, and, and I step right back in and say, uh, when I, when I hear them being talked over, I step right back in and say, no, actually, uh, Joe, hang on, I want to hear what Jane had to say. Let's make sure she gets a chance to finish and, and, uh, try and be there to, to open up that space. Um, when I'm talking with people in the company, uh, or in, in groups, I always out myself pretty early on. It's pretty easy to be gay in, in tech, but it's still important, I think, for those of us who are in secure spots to, to do that, to help, uh, bring folks on, um, and then, um, I've got one more example. Uh, I'll, I'll do it at the expense of time. I apologize, but I want to tell this story too. I was part of an organization that, um, had rules on gender equity, right? Uh, we said, okay, for some officer positions, we, we figured out a way to make it gender balanced, but it was very much on a, a binary gender, and it was pretty forward-thinking when they created this policy in the seventies. Uh, but here it was, this was about ten years ago, so here we are, ten and twelve. And, you know, non-binary was, was not something that I had contemplated in, in the seventies. Uh, and so I worked with that body to change, uh, the way we've done the rules, so we didn't lose the gender balance that we had uh, wanted to maintain, but we reformulated it in a way so that, that non-binary people would have an opportunity to participate. If they didn't feel like they were a male or female, like, they, there was, the rules were such that, uh, they could feel able to be part of it, and no one had, no one asked us to do this, um, as far as I know. Uh, at the time, I didn't actually even know any out-binary people, um, but I don't know if people didn't ask us to do it because, um, they weren't comfortable asking for it yet, um, or we didn't have anyone, but at any rate, I wanted to, uh, make sure that we changed our rules before we needed them so that they were welcoming, they didn't have to come and say, please make a rule change for me. Uh, cause I can't participate in your current rules, so I wanted to get ahead of the rules and change them so that, uh, when someone did come and, uh, and the world has changed a lot in the past ten years, that there now are a lot more out, uh, non-binary people, uh, that they could participate without having to ask for that sort of rule change. So, thank you for your question.
Thank you. Our next question will be from Alder Conklin.
Hi, Eric. What are some of the critical issues facing District Three?
Uh, thank you. Um, and, uh, just want to acknowledge Robert, who had the tough business of going first, uh, and a lot of the other questions are sort of independent. It doesn't matter if I hear your answer, but this is one where, where, um, all of us can build on what we were talking about before. So in the interest of, of fairness here, I'm only gonna talk about what I had written down before, before the meeting, but Robert has, had raised some really great things that I would also have echoed. So, there are a few uh, parts of District Three that where there's some little hotspots of crime that, um, that things need to be, um, kept an eye on. Um, this is on, kind of all across the district, on the far boundaries in the far west side, the, the the hotel conversion project, uh, out here, there's a couple of projects, uh, where the property management company has been having a rough time, uh, keeping track of things. I know Alder Limer has been working with them to keep things, um, um, keep things moving forward. Um, I think one of the big things in District Three is gonna be future development. There's a lot of cornfields out here. We're gonna be building a lot of new, uh, housing and, and, uh, how uh, new neighbors and new infrastructure, uh, and so plotting out, plotting out those, uh, uh, neighborhoods, planning for that, uh, working and bringing everyone in and, and integrating folks, uh, into the neighborhood and, and shaping that neighborhood uh, to be what we want to see in the city of Madison. It's gonna be something that's really important. Um, Lord only knows what's gonna happen if someone builds a, a ramp to Interstate ninety-four, uh, which is kind of right in the middle of the district here, um, and so I think that, is planning for that sort of moves forward. I think that's gonna be a lot of, um, a lot of concern. Uh, and then one that's kind of literally under review, um, is PFAS in the water. If you look at the, the PFAS map of If you look at the PFAS map of where contamination is, a lot of it's centered over District Three. And this isn't quite a big thing yet, but I think it's going to be more and more of an issue and it's a tough issue. I mean, if, at least if it was some traffic, you know, we could fix that easily. But this is going to be, this is going to be a challenge to fix. It's going to be a challenge to get information. Now people are going to be scared. What's in the water? Can I trust the water? This is not going to be an easy issue. And so, so it's, it's not an issue that directly affects everyone in the city. But for the districts that are affected, it, it's going to be something we have to really work hard on. So, so thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is from Alder Bennett.
Sweet. So provide an example of a time that you took a lead role either at work or in your community.
Thank you. I'm going to use a work story for this. And it's not really related, but I can turn it into something that, that actually is related here. And so you're going to have to hear a lot of stories. So I think maybe occasionally work ones that are kind of just a little interesting might be fun for you over the next month. So we'll see. You might totally hate this when I'm done with it. So, but I'm going to tell you a bit of work story. And I work for an HVAC company. And so I need to teach, I need to teach you 30 seconds of how buildings work. So buildings are like 40% of, of energy usage in the world. It's a huge part of, of energy and like homes are really easy for how, how they're controlled. Like you've got a thermostat, temperature goes up, AC kicks on, temperature gets too low, furnace kicks on. And, and, and turns back off when, when the temperature gets right. But in commercial building, it's way harder because there's thermostats in each room. And so there's vents that are blowing and some airs, some rooms are getting air and some rooms aren't. You have to pull in fresh air to, to, to be part of that, to circulate air around. The air may be too humid and the way you get humidity out of the air is you chill the air. But now that air might be too cold to blow in the room. So down the vent, you got to fire up a heater to reheat the cool air, the, the air that you cooled down to get all the humidity out, to get that back up. And so it's a really complicated setup to run the air in commercial buildings. And so there's a lot of configuration work to set all that up. And as you might imagine, that configuration work isn't always done very well. So there's a, so energy usage in the building is 40% of it, but a lot of the commercial buildings are wasting huge amounts of energy. The Department of Energy says, look, if people had just tuned this and here, we'll even publish the algorithms for how you run your building. We could save tremendous amounts of energy, like the equivalent of like taking all the jet planes out of the world amounts of energy. There's a lot on the, on the table here for just fixing these things or implementing the schedules so that when the building is unoccupied at 2:00 AM on a Saturday, all the offices are perfectly comforted. There's a whole lot of work we could do. But it's really hard to set up the software to do that because the data about them isn't compatible between different systems. Remember Beta versus VHS. You know, people didn't know what data, well, the data is incompatible and there are multiple standards that say, here's what the data is for you to these different systems. And all the companies have different standards and some of them all work together to create a standard, but there's a whole bunch of them. And there's a couple in America that the Europeans have one. There's all these standards and they don't work together. And so people aren't implementing these fancy control systems because it's too hard to set them up because all the data about everything's different. And it's for my Beta versus VHS or the Blu-ray standards, like no one's buying, no one's buying this since because no one can figure out what standard to use. And no one wants to buy until the standards are figured out, but no one knows how to get the standards. So my company runs one of the standards and I spend my time working on that standard. And what I've been trying to do is work with the other standards to figure out how do we all work together and come together. And this is a little bit tricky because there's competition reasons, like some, each one of us kind of wants to be the winner. Some people are paid explicitly to work on the standard. And so I don't want to, so we don't want them to lose because they don't want to lose because they don't want to work with us in case they lose because then they'd be out of a job. And so we have this kind of tough problem of how do we all work together? So I've been working on these standards for the past year to try and find ways to make it so that we all win. So we all figure out ways that what's a little of this change that we can make here with you? And what's the change we can make with you that we can all sort of still exist? And we all need to be, we all need to be able to declare ourselves winners at the end of this because we all certainly need to justify our existence and keep around. But in order for the, the world to get access to, to this, this data in a way that they can all work together, to get these tremendously big energy savings, we got to be, we do have to figure out how to work together on this. So, so I'm working on really hard to figure out how do we bring it all together to become, make everyone feel like they're a winner? And the reason I bring this up is I think it actually matters for regional cooperation where there's political questions. And there are like, there are crazy answers where like both sides are at a standoff because they don't want to do anything together. And I think the way forward is to always be looking for little ways for both sides to be able to declare themselves a winner. So that was a really long and rambling answer, but I hope you get to the kind of point that I want to find these places where we can work together and that's the sort of leader I want to step up and be part of. So thank you for the opportunity to give a long and rambling answer.
Thank you. Our next question is from Alder Foster.
Thanks Eric. What are some of the critical issues facing the city?
Thank you. And again, to, to Robert, who also highlighted a lot of excellent issues. So I want to highlight a couple of mine. The first one is the budget and specifically the levy. We are in real trouble with the levy coming up here in the next couple of years. Because of the way it works, you know, we can't raise levy very much going forward, but because of inflation, we're going to be under tremendous budget pressure for things that we normally fund up the levy. We can't count on the state because the state doesn't care. They don't like Madison. Not going to change anytime soon. State's not really affected by this because they come from, their funding comes from income taxes and, and sales taxes, all of which go up when wages go up and inflation goes up. And, and so they're not gonna, they're not under the same pressure that the cities are going to be under. And federal funding is helping us for a little bit right now. But we are going to be in real trouble in a year or two or three when people, our staff that haven't had, been able to have raises, but have had cost of living increases. And even though I don't think inflation rates are going to stick at the rate they are, those price, those base prices are already, are already factored in. And we're going to have, you know, a, a year here in a couple of years where people, where our staff needs a couple of four or five percent raises to keep up with market rate pay. And we aren't going to be able to get the money from it. We get some money, we're better off than a lot of cities. And at least we have some construction. I mean, I would not want to be Beaver Dam or Ladysmith or something right now. But we don't, the, the, the new construction is not adding enough money to keep up with what I think we're going to be at. So this is going to be a real challenge for the council to figure out this budget. Housing, housing affordability, housing costs are a real problem. They can't keep rising what they, with what they have been historically. I think we really need to be able to focus on building more housing. We need to be able to focus really hard on building more affordable housing and low-income housing. But housing at any market price point is going to be helpful. But we, we just need to be able to build more. I think that's really important and that's the best way we've got to be able to try and keep costs down. Economic development is something I think is really important. And, and I'm not talking just startups. I live in the tech world and so startups are a big part of that. But, but I'm really interested in growing the middle class, racial disparities in our racial disparities in, in our economic attainment by folks in Madison. First off, it's just ethically wrong that, that you know, of, of large class of folks just aren't able to participate in the same economy as everyone else. But even if you set that aside, even if you're heartless and say, ah, whatever, I'm, you know, free market yay. You can't afford to leave folks out, right? I mean, it's just, it's just bad for growth. We're not going to be able to grow the way we need to grow. If we're setting, leaving a whole class of folks behind. So I want to work on that with the EDC. I had a section in my, my, my letter about using city HR as a development for, for people and being able to, to build a bigger pipeline of folks into the middle class. And it's kind of predicated on believing that the city does a pretty good job of, of bringing in a diverse set of folks into entry level and, and medium level positions. But I think we can be using the city HR as a conduit to continue their career development. So there's more in my cover letter, but I've been going on long enough. So I will pause there.
Thank you. Our next question is from Alder Figaro.
Thank you. Hi Eric. So again, pretty long question, but a very calm issue. You receive a lot of feedback from residents surrounding a project in the district. Your general sense is 60% are in favor of the project and 40% are against it. How do you balance public feedback against policies, goals, and priorities? What steps do you take into consideration to arrive at your position?
Right. Thank you. This is a great question because this is the job, right? In a lot of ways, this is the job for all the parts that we talk about for bringing people together and, and in, in doing all this, there comes a point where it's just the 20 folks in the council that have to make a decision. And, and that's where we're at here. So a couple of things to sort of keep in mind. First off, the numbers are not always helpful and they're rarely that good. You know, 60, 40, if that's kind of what your guts telling you, it could just easily be 40, 60. And even so, it's going to be a lot of folks that you don't hear from. Even elections are not always great indicators because, you know, if you treat it as like, well, I got re-elected, so I must be doing something right. It's a hard job, right? Lots of people don't run for this because it's a hard job. So people don't jump into it. And just because you didn't get an opponent, doesn't mean that everyone's thrilled with you, the way you're doing this job. So you got to kind of keep that in the back of your mind. And you don't always want to rely on numbers alone. So even if you don't believe the 85% police body cam number, I'm pretty sure, and, and I don't think the WPPA, like I don't necessarily trust their polling numbers on this. And, and, and I'm sure it's not that big in Madison, but I'll bet it's, but I'm sure it's a big majority in Madison. I'm sure it's over 50%. I'm sure it's pretty high in Madison for public support. But I'm also okay not saying that, well, it's highly supported and therefore we just do it. I know I'm, I'm support that we take our time on this and we study this. And, you know, we don't want to just brush and do it because we got to make sure that we're building trust if we're going to do this. And, and I want us to be a model city. And sometimes that means not rushing into this. Just because everyone else in the world is doing it, doesn't mean that we have to do it too. Right? That's part of what being a city that says, you know what, we're going to do what we think is the right thing, not try to just follow along. So, so yeah, it's also worth remembering that the worst case scenarios and the best case scenarios rarely happen. The Edgewater fight, which consumed so much civic energy in, in Madison, we're 10 years out of it. And how did it turn out? Well, it wasn't the huge economic boom that everyone said, that the supporters said it was going to be. And it was not the destruction of the ancient hill that, that the opponents said it was going to be. It's, it's fine. Out in District Three, there was a huge fight over a grocery store. And 10 years later, it's fine. So, so sometimes we, we engage some passions, but, but we, we shouldn't necessarily be afraid because sometimes the outcomes aren't, aren't as good as bad as we, things might be. But so kind of how I think about it is what is, what could happen if you're right or wrong about it and can you undo it? At one point in time, there was a plan to build a, an expressway across the east. That would have devastated, it would have torn down and destroyed all sorts of neighborhoods in the interest of, of traffic. And it's something we'd never do today. But if they had done it, we would not be able to recover from it. That, once you do that, it's, it's over and that, that decision is made for, for decades. So you, you just can't change that once you've gone down that road. But there's other things. Bus rapid transit down State Street. I support bus rapid transit down State Street. I think the stops in State Street are fine. But if I'm wrong about it, if we do, go ahead and we do that, and it turns out that I'm wrong about it, it's not the end of the world. It's not that expensive to jackhammer out a couple of concrete pads and reroute it. We're not paving over the arboretum. It's not an irreversible decision. So I think that's one where there's strong passions, but we can look at it and say, the worst case scenarios here are not so terrible. But you do also keep in mind who you harm if you take an action. There's a spot in Madison that I really, really want to put a park. Like 100 years from now, people are going to say, the folks in 2022 were terrible people. Like they polluted everything. They raised animals for mass slaughter. They went to work sick. But this park is great. I'm glad they did it 100 years ago. But I wouldn't move forward that, that park right now because the folks living there are disproportionately African-American. And even if you gave everyone a really fair market price for it, something that ostensibly did not do them any harm, I still don't think it'd be right to break up that neighborhood. So, so I think when you're addressing things like this, that you're, how do we come down? You keep in mind your priorities and your principles. So for me, besides the do no harm to those who have been traditionally harmed, there's a counterpoint principle of find ways to help those who've been historically harmed. Other principles for me are sustainable future, housing affordability. One good thing about our system is that no one person has to make this decision by themselves. No alder unilaterally sets policy in their district. So even if I as an alder were struggling with the decision of whether to do something, in the most part, at least 10 other alders have to see struggling with the same decision before we can make a decision too. So, so it's, and so, so these, these 10 people are struggling, going through the same decision-making process. So it's harder for the council to get something completely wrong because it's not up to any one individual to do this. So, so at the end of the day, I mean, I think you can only do your best. You can port yourself with, you know, ways so that you make people that, you make people think that you're always acting in good faith. And you trust that everyone else is, and you vote the way that you think is right. So thank you.
Thank you. Last question is for me. How do you reach District Three residents who are not engaged in traditional ways like neighborhood associations?
Okay, I'm going to try and be brief because that last one went pretty long. But I'm super interested in this question. And so the first thing I'm going to do is obviously, I'm going to ask Aldo Lemmer, what works for you? All right, let's just take, you know, like, you know, what's the best practices that work for you right now? And, and can you try and continue those? Something I want to do is I want to go out and do doors. Because I don't, I didn't have a campaign. I didn't get that opportunity to go out and, and see voters. It's nice, nice time of the year and it's really nice to go talk to people when you don't have to ask them for your vote. You can just go out and, and, and talk to folks. The county board used to be really good about doing this. And the off years to just have folks go out and meet neighbors in the summer. And I, and I'd kind of like to start doing that again as well. So obviously get on, involved in mailing lists. I'm going to begrudgingly get on Nextdoor. Giggle at the best of Nextdoor Twitter accounts, but, but I know people are there and so you have to meet folks where they are. Want to see where we're at on the newsletter budget and the older expense accounts, maybe get that out. I'm interested in hearing from other alders, if office alders, if office hours have been useful and successful. Worst cases that you go to a coffee shop with your laptop and you work and, you know, no one shows up, hey, it's not the, you know, that's fine. So, so blasting out information is one thing. And I think the other part of this is how do we hear better as well, what are people saying? So, I have, you know, I have kind of a bonkers idea, but I'll save that for, for later. So this is something I'm really interested in, in follow-up discussions with kind of now the structure of government task force is kind of wound down and we're thinking about how do we continue those discussions? I think this is something that really needs to be part of it. And it's something I'm really interested in, in discussing. So thank you for your question and thank you all for your, for your questions.
Thank you, Eric. Are there any clarifying questions? Alder Conklin, go ahead.
Thank you, President Furman. So Eric, it's kind of a two-part question. I really liked your story that you told about writing the opinion paper for the Badger Herald. And so my question is, is how come you didn't write your own opinion about white privilege coming from your point of view? Because it was an opinion paper. That's part one. And then if you want to answer that, I'll ask the second question.
Okay, the reason I didn't do it was because I, I was trying for a hook. I was trying to, the case I was trying to make was that, you know, racial progress doesn't even do a zero-sum game. But I didn't have the right way to say it yet. And, and what I wrote was, I don't think right or good. And, and I wasn't comfortable with it even then. And now that I've, I haven't looked at it in years, but the last time I looked at it, I thought, ooh, dodged a bullet on that one. So I think I would have, you know, it would have been a little bit of tech girl shoots off his mouth and says something stupid. And, and so I'm fortunate that, you know, that one I, I didn't do. And, and I've learned a lot more and I would, I would just be cautious because it's just not an area that, because it's not something I live. And being able to switch on and off LGBT identities, not, not sufficient background to be able to sort of LGBT identities, not, not sufficient background to be able to sort of understand the, the, the the challenges that other people have. So, so I didn't publish it because it wasn't good and I'm glad that I didn't.
Okay, thank you. So the second kind of follow-up question to that, do you believe that lived experiences equal, you know, degrees, degree, people, the same degree holds same weight as people who have degrees or, you know, extensive studies in certain areas? Do you believe lived experiences have those same qualifications, tenacity?
Well, you certainly never argue with anyone's lived experience. You don't ever say that your lived experience, like I've got studies that say your lived experience is wrong. So, so I, so, so yeah, I guess I do say that the lived experiences are, are important. Let me think about. Yeah, I guess I, I want to understand a little bit better exactly kind of where you're coming from on sort of the, the degrees and studies. But, but I think it's really important to, to respect people's lived experiences and and treat them, treat them with tremendous respect.
Thank you, Eric. That's all I have.
Any other clarifying questions from CCC members? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you so much, Eric. I'm going to ask alders to go ahead and use their, the surveys for the, the second applicant and it should say Eric's name up top. And go ahead and submit that. And I believe there possibly might be a motion for a bathroom break. Does somebody want to make that motion? Alder Bennett and second by Alder Figaro Cole, we're going to do five minutes. You know, we definitely want to try to, try to get going. So it's eight oh one now, we will resume. So I'm sorry. So unless I hear otherwise, I'm going to sue unanimous consent and we'll see everybody back at eight oh six. Alder Figaro Cole, go ahead. You want ten minutes?
No, I want, okay, five minutes after I submit my, my response. So can we finish? The response and then we go?
Oh yeah, no, definitely. Go ahead and get your, okay, so you want me, you want to wait before we adjourned everybody getting the response? Okay, well, wait a moment, make sure everybody gets in their response and then we'll go ahead and, we'll go ahead and start that. So yep, I don't want to steal your five minutes. That's fair. We're waiting for two more responses and then we'll go ahead and, and start that five minute clock. If people have submitted their responses, they can go ahead and sneak out. See everybody back here in five minutes, eight oh eight. Up, you're muted.
President Furman?
Present.
Vice President Curry?
Here.
Alder Bennett?
Here.
Alder Conklin?
Present.
Alder Figaro Cole?
Here.
Alder Foster?
Here.
Alder Heck?
Here.
Alder Bass? You have quorum.
Thank you. Our next applicant and our final applicant of the evening is Rhonda Smiley. Welcome back. Our first question will come from Alder Heck. Alder Heck, go ahead. And actually, I'm sorry, everybody, your third applicant survey. It should say Rhonda's name up top. All right, go ahead, Alder Heck, thanks.
Okay, Rhonda, what knowledge, skills, and resources do you already possess that will help you become an effective interim alder?
Hi, everyone, and thank you for the bathroom break. I'd also like to say I'm going to follow Eric's lead. I think I've been really advantaged by being the last one and being able to hear both of them, especially because their knowledge of the city is so much deeper than mine. So I really am going to look at the notes I made and not steal from them, which I was very tempted to do because I think they both said things amazing. So thank you very much. I really talked about my direct experiences with law, policy, and government in the first round. And so I wanted to bring something new to this question. And I think the other thing that the army experience gave me is I know how to jump into somebody else's job. We would move every eighteen to twenty-four months and you were always replacing someone. There were already policies in place, there were already projects moving forward. And your job isn't always to reinvent the wheel, but to take things to their end state. So that, that experience taught me that, you know, when you get to the new job, you've got to be ready to jump, which is why I, I actually have gone through already all the alder sessions from twenty twenty-one. I feel like I know some of you guys from having watched so much Zoom. So it was my time, if appointed, it's ten months. I wanted to be able to understand the processes that are required. Legislar system, consensus agenda, expenses, budget, so that really I can spend the first few weeks figuring out what the, what my angle is for my district and my constituents and the city on the issues at hand. I've already got a tentative list of, of people I would like to start meeting with to get better educated on them. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question will be from Alder Curry.
Hi, Rhonda. Thanks for the pun and humor. Getting late. Two-part question. Please describe the ways you practice and demonstrate equity and inclusion and how you would model these practices in this assignment. Please provide an example of measures you have taken to further your knowledge of equity, inclusion, and racial justice.
Thank you. This question, during my time in the military, we were constantly evaluating ourselves and receiving training in this arena. We understood, especially as I progressed into leadership roles, the military needs to reflect the population it serves. And your best candidates come from your widest pool. I was human resource management, if you haven't figured that out already. So you want the widest pool possible to consider. Don't put qualifiers on something if you don't need to, if they are not legitimately required. And so, so I've seen firsthand the importance of doing that and how that then lifts up the whole group. As a member of that institution, I've reported statistical data, helped move forward on changing systems, looked at bias, built in bias, and also through training, had to try and find my own blind spots, which I had. I grew up in Wisconsin in Fort Atkinson. I hadn't been exposed to the bigger world or even much outside Fort Atkinson, Wisconsin. My, my first plane trip was to basic training. So so I've learned a lot through those processes. I read the hard stuff. And it's hard to read how historically we have disadvantaged people. It, it breaks my heart. It's and then through the army, I've read how we had to integrate by color. We had to race, integrate by gender. We then had to integrate by sexual preference. And I don't always use the right terms, but because I'm old and I'm trying to get current, but you know, but it was always reactive. It was always somebody forcing us to change. I was excited to see that inspire model that the city is using because it tries to be more proactive to build into processes, these questions that are we inclusive, are we creating trust before it's asked of us? So my experience has been very reactionary. But I'm excited about moving forward with Madison to change that.
Thank you. Our next question will be from Alder Conklin.
Hi, Rhonda. What are some critical issues facing District Three?
This was tough. I really had trouble finding District Three specific issues to talk about. But, you know, none of our districts is an island. And so, you know, how do we move towards the future, given the projected population of growth? The housing issues, certainly, I think it was Eric, but it might have been Robert who talked about this district having such a diverse, we've got some rural, rural areas. We've got these old established, like I'm in Heritage Heights, it's an older neighborhood. And how do we keep it affordable? How do we integrate these new neighborhoods? That interstate is, is a, is a river that cuts us off from that part of my district. You know, how do we make it easy to walk from there to here to make the city livable? So in truth, I don't want to waste your time and say, I've got a list of District Three issues. I don't. I have an issue of bigger ish, I have a list of bigger issues that are more citywide, which we'll talk about in a later question. And I recognize that if appointed, one of my things is to get up to speed in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question is from Alder Bennett.
Thank you. Um, provide an example of a time that you took a lead role either at work or in your community?
Well, this one, so naturally, because I, I joined as a junior officer and I worked my way up to the point of retirement, I had a lot of leadership. I think, however, it's important to note that, you know, a lot of people assume military leadership can be done by fiat. And it can at the lowest levels. When you're in the battle, you can tell someone, go shoot fire. But, you know, as you rise in rank, the issues become more complex and it rarely serves anyone well to decide an issue by fiat. Specifically, I was assigned to the Director of Military Personnel Management. It's called DMPM because we lack our acronyms. It's the Army's Personnel Office in the Pentagon. I was there from twenty-ten to twenty-thirteen. And so while I'm there and I'm, I'm just a colonel, just like, you know, which at the, a colonel at the Pentagon's like, I don't know, like low. Anyway. So while we're there, the administration's going to downsize the army from five hundred and seventy thousand to four hundred and ninety. So I'm in the office that's responsible to formulate the plans. So how many people do we have to recruit? How many doctors do you want to keep? Who needs to retire? How should we promote so that not only can we lower in number, but we can lower and still be responsible to the needs of the nation? When those, when those issues pop up, you have to build plans like that through consensus. And there's always the political angle concerning the number that are in the army and what that structure is made of. So getting that right just required a lot of, a lot of coordinated meetings, a lot of inputs. And then certainly I was not the final decision maker. I was one of the people who then took my group's recommendations forward into the next level for consideration. But it was exciting time and those were some very heated meetings and I, I did my best. I, I hope everyone that, that had to be in a meeting with me felt hurt.
Thank you. Our next question is from Alder Foster.
This is your chance to talk about the citywide issues, Rhonda. Go ahead.
Thank you. Honestly, I think the biggest challenge facing Madison is its growth. Because everything else is either created or exacerbated by more people needing affordable housing, by more people arriving here seeking employment, by more people using our transportation corridors. And so it's kind of a, a easy way to say growth, that's our number one issue. But so much of it falls under there and I'm excited to see Madison kind of go from this wonderful, I, I I really do love living here. I'm, I'm so happy we moved. But, but we're going to become a bigger city and are we ready for it? And how do we then take this governance? You guys work hard. I'm, now that I've gotten into seeing how the city council works, I am in admiration of every one of you for stepping up and doing this. I, I no longer have to have full-time employment, so I'll be able to dedicate some time to this. I'm in awe of you guys. I think we need to look at how Madison's going to get ready to move forward to ensure that we can have democratic representation, even as the issues become more complex and require more time from government.
Thank you. Our next question is from Alder Figaro Cole.
All right. Thank you, Rhonda. So here goes the long question. You receive a lot of feedback from residents surrounding a project in the district. Your general stance is sixty percent are in favor of the project and forty percent are against it. How do you balance public feedback against policies, goals, and priorities? What steps do you take into consideration to arrive at your position?
Such a long question. I almost felt like saying you didn't have to read it. I've heard it three times without, so I would feel my mission. I, I'm strictly stepping in at the interim. I'm going to go on whatever record is required and say, I, I don't plan to go beyond this ten-month assignment. So so my short-term priorities, I'm going to serve my district with integrity and transparency. And that means that when, whatever, when there's a crucial issue, whatever my vote is, I should be able to articulate the why, whether it's I talked to the police department and they had these inputs and the data supports it going that way. Or my constituents, this is a uniquely District Three issue, which I don't know if we have any, I'd be shocked. But it's uniquely District Three, so I can go almost a hundred percent with what the constituency would prefer. But if I cannot, if I cannot articulate my stand, that means it's not strong. And if my constituency is divided, I need to get my act together and do due diligence so that I, I give them the kind of service they deserve. So it would be gather information, determine the answer, hold, you know, hearing meetings, whatever I need to do to get the information and the data and then make the decision that has been vested in by the appointment. I, I will say, I know a couple of things. I know that you cannot please all the people all the time. There's always going to be someone who prefer you do something different. And that in the army, we used to talk about that, you know, today's solution to your situation is actually going to be tomorrow's problem. Whether it's, you know, you expand a roadway because traffic flow, but then now you've got to, now tomorrow you have a neighborhood that's not walkable or familiar to people. So, so each solution eventually, I think Eric was talking about it, you know, you may have to undo some things. So it's a, like I said, I'm in the admiration of all y'all.
Thank you. Our next question is for me. How, how do you reach District Three residents who are not engaged in traditional ways like neighborhood associations?
I don't know. I think social media's got potential. I think chat seems like, I'm going to go. All the kids are chatting these days, but I think there is so many media platforms out there. There's the Discord, the Nextdoor, Facebook, Instagram, Snapchat, Twitter, Reddit, Reddit's got a Madison subreddit. So I think those are ways to reach out. But what I also worry about is reaching those who are not, who don't have smartphones, who aren't integrated into these social media sites. And so I think it's the combination of capitalizing on social media and a lot of those are integrated. If you make a Madison Third District Twitter account and publish something, you can, it can cross-feed instantly into a Facebook third and an Instagram, so you're not constantly redoing things. It's just a matter of integrating your, your social media sites. I do think that it's important to note that these, none of this is mine to keep. So whatever I create, I want it to be handoffable to the alderperson who then is elected to, for the next, the next a class of alders.
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions? Okay, not seeing any. Rhonda, thank you so much at this, go ahead.
Just quickly, however this turns out, thank you so much. And I was sincere in saying that now that I've really examined what's going on, for you all to step up, to run for office and to do this and to my other applicants. Wow, amazing. Another reason why I love Madison. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Alder Bennett.
Thank you, and thank you for your
Thank you, and thank you for your time, Rhonda, and all the applicants. And Rhonda, if you don't mind me saying, my dad's a veteran, and I can see how much pride you take in your service, so I just want to say thank you for your service.
Back at you. Thank you for your service as well.
Thank you, Alder Bennett. So at this time, ask CCC members to go ahead and fill out that last and final survey and submit that, and once you're done with that, if you can go to the, the new, the newer pivot link, which was sent around 6:55, which would have round two. So if you're still logged in, you can go to my elections and refresh and see round two, and also do a ranking that we would use. Rhonda, where, is there? You can go ahead and unmute yourself, but.
Should we, as the applicant, stay on the meeting?
Please, yeah, we'll be making, we'll be making a recommendation this evening, so definitely, that was a good question. Thank you. So submit your survey monkeys, and then go to that pivot dot vote. If you saw it open, if you don't, go and reopen it. Look at my elections, we'll be using that to help if, in the event of a tie. And any questions, certainly let me know. So Karen will be doing the calculating, and we should have some information to share very shortly. Go ahead, Alder Bennett.
Um, so I see in my elections, I see the D3 vacancy round one, but I don't see round two yet.
Go ahead and just refresh. It should show up if you hit refresh.
Yeah, I've been refreshing it, and I clicked out of it, too. Should I just sign out and sign back in, maybe?
Yeah, actually, nope, 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 it's my mistake. Thank you. I will fix that right now. That's something I did.
Okay.
Go ahead and try to refresh now.
Okay, thank you.
President Furman, I signed out, and I also have been refreshing and do not see.
I'm sorry, didn't see your hand. Let me see. I will go ahead and try another, a new invite.
I'll complete my elections again in order to refresh for whatever reason.
Vice President Curry, do you see it now?
Nothing yet. Oh, I just got the invite.
Okay, so it looks like everybody has submitted survey monkeys, and Karen's doing her work, and then we're pretty close on pivot, which we'll use in the event of a tie, and we will have a discussion about that. All right, perfect. Thank you, everybody, for submitting that, and we should have some information to share shortly. Okay, thank you, Karen. I, I do want to repeat what, what has been said repeatedly this evening. I greatly appreciated everybody putting the time and effort into this this evening. I know from experience, it takes a lot to apply for a position like this, and it's a very, very stressful day. But your, your willingness to be involved is greatly appreciated, and I really hope that you, you stick with it and decide to get involved in, in BCCs and your neighborhood, and, you know, continue that involvement. According to the scoring, it looks like Eric Paulson will be Common Council Executive Committee's recommendation to fill the interim spot. So we have a an item on our agenda, which would, was introduced by Title One at our last meeting. Want to know if somebody wants to make a motion to put that forward. Alder Bennett, go ahead.
Moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion? Okay, is there any, I wanted to see, maybe I'll just ask this. I'm gonna assume that everybody on CCC that participated in this process would be okay with sponsoring this resolution in front of council. Not seeing any disagreement, so unless I hear otherwise, I will assume unanimous consent. Great, and so that brings us to the last item on our, on our agenda, which is enjoyment, enjoyment. I'm losing, losing my ability to speak. Can I get a motion? Alder Figaro Cole, and seconded by Alder Conklin, seeing, as long as there's no objection, we're gonna go ahead and call it a night. Thank you again, everybody.
The next agenda was in German. I'm like, what?
Goodnight, everybody. Thank you so much.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.